Good evening and welcome to this April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four Committee of the Whole. We do have some signatories on the sign in sheet today, and so the floor will be open for the audience for twenty minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda after the city council discusses with staff the item listed on the agenda. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. The comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. We are going to begin this evening with item number four regarding food pantry funding assistance partnerships. And for that, we will defer to Human Services Director Dr. Natalia Nieves, and she will present at the podium here too.
Good evening, thank you everyone, welcome. And just go ahead and get started really quick. I want to tell you a little bit about what we're proposing to do today. And first, I'm going to give you a brief history of the mobile food pantry, tell you a little bit about the current situation, proposed solution, and answer some questions. In two thousand and twenty, I got a picture of myself from a resident saying it was an empty fridge. I tried digging for the picture, but I couldn't find it. And I had no help, right? And so that was very eye opening as the food insecurity issues were really evident. And we partnered with a local church at the time who called and said, how can we help? And I said, people need food and they don't have transportation and they needed to the community because that's what's needed. And they said, yes. And so they came out weekly, about two hundred people would line up around our tiny office at the resource center there at East Park and around the buildings on a weekly basis. And they would receive food and at times through other volunteers, there were toiletries. And of course, the food pantries at the times were not operating. And childcare was a huge barrier as the children were having to stay home and pursue their education via Zoom or whatnot. And so we actually went ahead and took that opportunity to do further outreach as well. I kind of tend to never just do one thing at a time, as my staff will know. I like to offer more. And so we actually did some census data gathering pretty aggressively. Then you see the tents in the back, there were immigration consultations happening and offering case management and support at that time. So if you see the picture on the left, it's not as clear, but people lining up all the way to around the buildings. And that happened every week. So the need was was very present. Twenty twenty one, thinking this is a very short term solution to a short term problem. We reduced the amount of food pantry visits to once a month, yet people kept coming. There were less folks, but still pretty consistent attendance between sixty and seventy families or so per month. At the end of two thousand and twenty one, that particular church partner indicated that they could no longer do the mobile food pantry. And so I had kind of already planted the seed with All Saints Church and said, okay, we really need you guys. If you have the ability to do this, then they said, yes, let's do this. And so kind of started right away, consistent predictable presence of fourth Tuesday of the month at four P M. As people continued to count on that. And we were thinking it was potentially going to be temporary as well until, you know, it was no longer needed. Yet folks kept coming and so did All Saints. And I also pointed out another area that was significant insignificant need was the preserve at Woodfield. And even more isolated in terms of kind of resource desert. And so, once again, All Saints said, yep, let's do it. And so initially, it kind of started a little bit slower, maybe sixty, seventy residents would attend monthly, less visible. It's a location, it doesn't have like a gazebo or a center. But we, you know, that would park the van right up front and a big team would show up with food in lines. And people would be curious and they would put up signs as well on the lawn saying, food pantry today, come by. And the consistency, right? The first Wednesday of the month kind of made it also something that folks were counting on unpredictable. So two thousand and twenty three, significantly higher number in both locations of food pantry visitors. So one hundred and twenty families at East Park is about the average last year and about eighty at preserve. And that has changed the year or the number for this year. And so the question that they've traditionally asked for registration is how many people are in your family? And so people would say, for example, in January, one hundred and thirty nine families at East Park and one hundred and sixty three families at the preserve. So even higher. And February, East Park, two hundred and seventeen, one hundred and sixty four preserve. March, two hundred and forty at Park and one hundred and seventy three at preserve and one hundred and ninety at the preserve this this month, just a few weeks ago, two weeks ago. And East Park happens next week, so we don't have that number yet. But if you see with the rising costs of food and housing, everything, people are showing up for more food. And so the need continues to grow. I asked our partners at All Saints to give me a cost estimate of how much they spent per month for our specific food pantry. And so the cost on average, like six months ago, maybe a year ago, it was between a thousand and a thousand five hundred per site per month. And so this is the combined cost for January, one thousand sixteen, one thousand six hundred seventeen and fourteen cents. February, one thousand eight hundred and fifty three and March, two thousand and seven hundred. The amount of hours and work that the staff and the volunteers at All Saints, it's really not something we've calculated or we have no idea how much it costs, but it's, to me, it's invaluable. So currently, as of a few months ago, we've had a conversation that they really are financially struggling to continue to support the mobile food pantry efforts here. And so, you know, considering that in the residents that received the food pantry benefits are still struggling with barriers of transportation, hours of operation for the local food pantries associated with townships or with other churches that are just not fitting for folks that are working. Our current neighborhood resources center space is not adequate for an onsite food pantry either. No other entity offers mobile food pantry services in Rolling Meadows, not due to lack of me asking. I have certainly asked. And just keeping in mind that school will be out for three months this summer for elementary school and a lot of children count on school for meals. So just really the consequences to me are potentially devastating. So the proposed solution, seeking your guidance here, is, you know, that we establish a partnership where the city would reimburse All Saints for the cost of food associated with the Rolling Meadows sites. They would continue to operate the mobile food pantries, both at East Park and the preserve. And our Human Services Department would continue to offer all the communication with the community and outreach and staffing support. And All Saints would provide receipts monthly for reimbursement up to a thousand five hundred per month and initially would be a one year commitment. The max cost for the next year until April, two thousand and twenty five would be eighteen thousand dollars. And for this year, we have, would be a combination of the D C O operating grant that we received and the community programs budget within the Human Services Department. That's a picture of the food pantry set up at the preserve.
Thank you, Dr. Nieves. So before I open up the floor for the council's questions and discussion, I'm glad that you provided a bit of history regarding why Rolling Meadows was able to address this need at the beginning in two thousand and twenty. So you had mentioned that food pantries, which are normally operated by the townships, were ceasing operations during the pandemic. So for the council, can you refresh their memory about our relationship with the townships? How many are operating within Rolling Meadows or they are in these particular sites? And normally, what kind of resources we expect and that they're actually mandated by residents here who live in those townships?
So we have four different townships that cover Rolling Meadows, a small portion of Wheeling. East Park is Elk Grove Township, Palatine Township, and the Arbor Drive is Schaumburg Township. They have brick and mortar buildings that are wonderful and they have great food pantries during largely business hours. The distance for some of our residents, for the residents that benefit from the mobile food pantries is just really not feasible transportation. Public transportation is difficult as it is. And imagine with four boxes of food, that would be quite a challenge. I did reach out to each directly and I said, well, let me backtrack. Throughout, since two thousand and seventeen, we have the Rolling Meadows Partners Meetings. And this need has been identified and brought up and the townships are part of the Rolling Meadows Partners Meetings. But really, no one has been willing or able to to find the value perhaps in doing mobile food pantries. So I also reached out in advance to get a sense of, hey, we have this problem. I'm preparing to present to the council tonight, right now. Do you have a solution? Are you willing to partner or support these efforts for the mobile food pantry? This is the issue, right, same that I just presented to you all. Wheeling Township said, don't get back to me. Schaumburg Township has not responded yet. Elk Grove Township said that they cannot financially support at this time, but they do have some accommodations. On Tuesdays, they open till seven P M. And they can also kind of prepackage food for people, for them to go pick up for them if they can't somehow go shopping. But they can arrange for a pickup. And Palatine Township also indicated that they, they didn't say, no, we can't help. But they they acknowledged that they're also struggling with with numbers. They're also having a higher number of people visiting their pantries. And they did say that recently they partner with All Saints to let them use their vehicle. They have a large vehicle that's actually going to be really helpful for All Saints. I know they go purchase everything in one large van and tons of minivan, so this will diminish a lot of that. But certainly, no one expressed interest in assisting with the mobile food pantry at this time. That helps or do you have more?
I think that's helpful for the council to consider because it sounds like we have a model that is very effective in Rolling Meadows based off of the number of families and family sizes that were self reported. So it's, I would like for the council to consider, as they deliberate on their direction for city staff, what kind of asks we would have from our townships in considering these effective options in food pantries, given that we had several barriers to entry to even be able to participate in food pantries that exist in brick and mortar. So if we don't have transportation, we don't have childcare. If the hours aren't conducive to when individuals can come back from work and be able to get food, then effectively, that resource doesn't exist for them. So that's something that I would like the council to consider in their questions and deliberations. With that, what comments do we have from the council this evening? Aldrin Boucher, Veniziano, and then O'Brien.
So being from a ward whose residents directly are affected and I have witnessed the efficiency. If anyone's here from the food pantry, your efficiency is amazing, how quickly you set up, how friendly you are with every, like, it is a well oiled machine. I know how far away Elk Grove Township you have to cross underneath the expressway if you're walking, which is not ideal. It's a haul to get all the way there. And if they can't bring it to us, with this directly affecting a good chunk of my ward, I would have to say that I'm definitely leaning towards that we give the consideration to move forward with the budgeting for this to help feed our residents who need it, especially with the kids being home for Memorial Day to Labor Day from the elementary schools.
Thank you. Aldrin Veniziano.
Thank you. So I would, I'm definitely in favor of supporting this. My other part to this would be that I would challenge us as a community to really bring our resources internally. So I know we do fill the Humvee at Christmas time. We do local food drives for like Palatine Township. Let's bring that food and just serve our community first. I know as a resident, I am more apt to throw more food into those donations, knowing that it's going to our residents, my neighbors. And so I would challenge us, let's look at our resources that we tend to donate out to. And let's look at serving our community first.
Thank you. Go Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, I understand the need for it, have the experience for the last several years to do the fill the Humvee. And last, it was actually just last November, December, helping take the stuff to Palatine. It was an awe that the shelf, like, I think there was one bag of rice left on the shelf. So there's a, I know, I have to get closer to the new microphones, there are a clear, clear need for that. Just a couple of questions, I'm fully supportive, I'm just going to clarify a couple of things. So the fifteen hundred per month, it's per site, so we'll roughly be helping All Saints with fifty percent of their costs, is that right? Because your costs are about three thousand dollars a month?
You're talking about fifteen hundred a month?
Right, right, but your budget is three thousand. Okay, it's fifteen hundred, like, based on the write up, it's fifteen hundred per site, so we'd be able to help fifty percent at least, correct? Okay, great. Yeah, I wanted, because I thought it was per site, that's why I wanted to just double check that. And then, not to beat a dead horse or things like that, is there, through this, I was glad I heard you say registration in your presentation. This, there's a way, because I understand it's in collect, it's just anybody in need can come for their, when they have their food pantry. This, we are somehow verifying residency because word's going to spread. There is such a need for that, kind of when we talked about the last topic about the new medical clinic. That was the concern I raised there, absolutely full support, but similar to all the women, Veniziano's perspective, making sure it's for Rolling Meadows residents. So do we, not that we need to keep a log of name, because I know there's personal information on that, but I just ask, is there a way that we drag more than individual family that they actually are residents of Rolling Meadows? If I have a hard time going back when it can be people from many places.
We're moving in that direction. We're actually going to register people in two different spaces. We're registering with the Greater Chicago Food Depository, who is largely going to start sponsoring the food pantry on the All Saints level. And because we all approve the database for for social services, they're going to be registering with with our database as well.
Okay, so we'll have at least if they're rolling, they'll have an address. We don't need name, I mean, obviously, that's up to you, your team, but we'll at least have a verifiable address that their residents are rolling metals. And then the last question I have, thank you, Mayor, is for tapping into the grant funds. Did we, I know it's very minimal when we talk about the overall city budget, but did we have anything else earmarked on the D C O grants for five hundred thousand dollars that were not going to be now available? A time is unfortunate.
No, because I gave it a lot of freedom and I designated a hundred and thirty two thousand for community programming, including Christ kind of emergency financial assistance, which this falls under that category.
Great. And to your point, maybe we do start taking, I mean, full support is going forward, but eighteen thousand, maybe next year it's twenty thousand. Could we partner with All Saints or Pantry, maybe put it towards a used vehicle? We're working with the township so we can have another mobile one, because we have to bring the support to the residents versus another barrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have a lot of history on this, so I appreciate maybe offline, we can talk about the history of this. Are you from All Saints? All Saints, well, thank you for what you're doing. And I believe All Saints is in Palatine, right?
Aldrin Kohler, I do have All Saints here listed on the item, so if you have questions specifically for All Saints, I can bring them forth to the floor. Would you prefer that?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have Seth Mullen Kovach, if you'd like to please share the podium with Dr. Nieves, just so we can make sure that the mic is being picked up for our meeting minute notes and for those.
Correct, is this?
That's perfect, thank you.
You can hear me? All right. My name is Pastor Seth Mullen Kovach from All Saints Lutheran Church, which is in Palatine. There's a couple of members of All Saints here who are volunteers. One, Dottie, is a resident of Rolling Meadows. Bruce is kind of the boss, volunteer boss of the whole mobile food pantry effort. He's from Hoffman Estates, but we like him anyway. So yes, our church is physically located in Palatine, but not to get too churchy on you, a church is not where the building is, it's where the people are. And we live, we've got folks from Hoffman and Schaumburg. And the two pastors of All Saints Lutheran Church, me and my lovely wife, live in Rolling Meadows. And a long history, we helped to found that Rolling Meadows Partners Group, all of that. And so we're happy to help to do whatever we can. And so just to give a little more context, so we have a pantry, we have a brick and mortar pantry as well. It's in the P O C building at Dundee and Rand in North Palatine. And in late two thousand and twenty one, when businesses and churches were worried they were going to have to shut down, we did a silly thing and we bought a truck and made a big investment because we know that poverty, especially in the suburbs, is primarily defined by transportation. You can't get there, you can't get there. And so we take the food to where people are. And we've worked with school districts, Dr. Nieves, other neighboring communities, versions of Dr. Nieves, who are not Dr. Nieves, let's be honest. But so to identify sites, and she laid out the history of why we're at the two sites in Rolling Meadows. It is our goal to continue to expand this throughout, you know, Palatine Arlington Heights. Right now, we're at two sites in Palatine, for the mobile, we're at two sites in Palatine, one in Arlington Heights and these two in Meadows. And the numbers that you've seen are kind of the rolling of portion of that. And I just, so this food pantry even itself is an outgrowth of Bethel Lutheran Church of Rolling Meadows, which was on the West Frontage Road of fifty three, closed down in two thousand and seventeen and brought their ministries and people to us. And so we kind of built this food pantry from that. We were serving an average, in our brick and mortar food pantry, we were serving an average of thirty families a week in two thousand and nineteen. We are now serving an average of six hundred and fifty families a week between the brick and mortar pantry and then these five mobile sites. Our church can't handle this alone, so, believe me. So we're building up a network of support of other churches, Harper College, school districts, all of this. We're in the process right now of separately incorporating as a five oh one C three. It'll be called Faith Feeds Food Pantry, just because it's way more than one church can handle anymore. And incorporating and legal things, right? You all understand that. So we're in that process right now. We are identified as a corporation by the state of Illinois. We're waiting for the I R S to tell us that we're a not for profit, which just takes time. So that is a little bit of the the history of that, but I just want to thank you all for considering this. And we have great relationships. We work closely with the township food pantries. As she said, Palatine Township is now letting us use their big box truck with a lift gate, which is awesome. And not just in Palatine Township, we'll be bringing it to East Park. But, and that's wonderful, so I don't want to say anything negative about the township food pantries, but to your point, we are the primary food pantry that's operating in Rolling Meadows, really through these two sites, at least by numbers, in terms of numbers served. And so if you'd like to have conversations about donations and things to the food pantry that will be used in Rolling Meadows, I'm always happy to talk about donations to the food pantry.
So Aldrin Kohler, what questions did you have regarding All Saints?
Thank you, Mayor. He's answered quite a few of them because I understand how we're coordinating all this. And it sounds like you are coordinating all this with some of our other churches, which I know had, I don't know if they still do. Does St. Clair still have one?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm glad to hear that you're doing that because the networks in coordinating, I think, is important. And I know my kids used to volunteer over at Bethel when they were there, but then they kind of left. So that's good. I think it's good to get that sense of coordination, and I think we also need to get the word out that donations, because I don't know how they're doing it anymore. cause I don't know how they're doing it anymore at, uh, these churches. I, I got the one in my, my church in mind, but I don't know how they're doing it anymore, cause I don't see it as visible. Um, so it's great that you're coordinating, and so I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm not gonna object to what you're doing. I just would like to get the word out, but then when you get the word out, we gotta be prepared to handle that. And the last point, I want to ask a question. Um, you know, you're, you're serving some of our communities that we know have families and are, have needs. What is our understanding of food needs within the senior community? You may not know.
It's still an assessment. I, we just showed up to the senior, two, two events with the seniors this, um, last month or so. And we're going to be doing more of that assessment, more showing up. What I've learned is you show up, they start seeing you, they start trusting. And then, so I'm, I'm working on the building of that relationship and solidifying so that they start trusting and they start asking. Um, one of the pieces, two pieces I wanted to really share, we're gonna have a, a part in the senior newsletter that the Part District, um, throws, uh, sends out quarterly, I believe, to the community. And I'll certainly plug that part in, the food pantry, and also our community social worker is gonna write, um, write up something every, every, uh, every quarter. And, um, many, many food drives that people offer me, like the Part District is doing one for the, um, Earth Day, uh, coming up. And all that, I always redirect to All Saints.
Actually, one follow-up question. Coming up in a few weeks here is the Stamp Out Hunger Drive that is coordinated by the post office. Are you one of the sites that they deposited to?
We, we, we are a recipient of that.
We'll be happy to have that.
Thank you.
Along with probably every food pantry that has been mentioned.
That's, that's, I just know that, uh, I go around driving around, picking it up and taking it to the various places, but thank you for doing that. I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Coler. Are there any other, yes, Alderman McHale?
Yeah. So for the, um, you said you were looking for fifteen hundred dollars. I'm assuming this is in addition to what you guys, that, this is what you guys go out and purchase for the needs as opposed, like you already have your pantry and you have, you know, this, but you're, this is the gaps in between, right?
Correct. Those, those numbers that she showed are the, the food that, you know, you have a food drive, the stamp of hunger, whatever, that, that helps. But Bruce is going to buy a hundred and twenty gallons of milk and things like that. That's exactly.
And perishables and things like that. So the church, cause at my church, you, at Holy Family, we have two ginormous banners with QR codes that say donate, and we do it once a month, and we really, you know.
Super helpful.
So, um, we could think about doing something like that here as well. Um, so that's in addition for perishables and things like that. If we were to do this, would you guys continue to be willing to come every, for the next year? Yes?
Yes.
Awesome.
I had to look at Bruce and let him know. Cause he's the one who actually does most of the work.
That, that's amazing. That's awesome. Okay. Um, I think that that was pretty much my question. Okay. Thank you. Oh, wait, no, I did have one more thing. The, um, I know that we do for, uh, in December, the township food drive, and I think we really need to think about maybe including Faith Feeds into that drive, um, so that those things are in the community as Jen said. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Um, while we have Mr. Seth at the podium here, is there any other questions or, um, that we have for him while he's here? For council?
Yes, Alderman Veniziano. Thank you. So is there anything that us as Alderman people could help in reaching out to our local churches or organizations that maybe Dr. Nieves has, and maybe they need a little bit more push from us that we can help with?
That is a great question. And I should have thought of an answer before, but off the top of my head, the two things that I can immediately think of, as I said, Faith Feeds, um, is this kind of newly forming entity and Holy Family. Right now, our sort of core partners there are All Saints in Palatine, St. Thomas Villanova in Palatine, and Holy Family. So you notice I didn't say Rolling Meadows. If any of you have connections to the Rolling Meadows churches, I will take them, I'll meet with them, we'll try to build up partnerships so that food drives and those kinds of things that you mentioned happen at Holy Family can happen. The other thing is we have on Faith Feeds, this newly forming group, we have a really good, um, sort of social media team who posts, uh, when we have food drives, when we have needs, what they are, how to volunteer, all of that. Cause this is almost all volunteers, you know, doing this. Uh, the money is just to go buy the milk. Cause milk's expensive. I don't know if you've noticed. Um, but, um, but if you, I, as a Rolling Meadows resident, I know that some of you do a great job with, with social media and kind of reaching out and just sharing that through whatever, whatever vehicles you can. And I can work with Dr. Nieves to just kind of make sure those connections are made. And I will probably think of other better answers to your question, and I'll reach out to you.
And then I'm assuming, second question to follow up, I'm assuming that there's volunteer opportunities because like at Meadows High School, there's the purpose. And those kids, I know a bunch of them are like getting down to the wire on their, needing their hours at this point, and that you'll take those.
Absolutely. We, we, we work closely with all the, the high schools in the area on that. Um, I should mention, just again, as a little point of Rolling Meadows, Rolling Meadows High School is one of the traditionally best food drives for us. They always do a thing at Thanksgiving, kind of like the Stamp Out Hunger. It's, it's the student council and one other group. I forget which one.
Yes, in our society.
Thank you. Um, but they go around the neighborhood, um, to my house, uh, around Thanksgiving, and they, they fill our truck. I mean, it's, it's, it's the biggest food drive we have every year, and that's been going for years. And that, Rolling Meadows High School does that. And I just kind of want to applaud them for that. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seth. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this point, um, so I appreciate the council's discussion so far. When I opened this up, I wanted to, um, make sure that Dr. Nieves was explaining the history that we've had with our townships, which have a sustainable revenue source through property taxes to be able to address the needs of our food pantries. And that really we're looking at a different model that's being presented by All Saints that we would, I would say, want to consider for our partners at the township, since we have four of them that touch Rolling Meadows, to be able to start adopting this as, or at least considering this for this model. Um, I, we've also heard this evening that we have Aldermen that are in support of a stopgap solution over the next twelve months, which is a, a, a maximum of eighteen thousand dollars towards supporting the materials for the food pantries of the two sites, so that operations can continue as they have. Um, with that, uh, looking for a straw vote, all for all those in favor of the solution proposed this evening regarding the eighteen thousand from April twenty twenty-four to April twenty twenty-five. It's unanimous, Dr. Nieves. All right. That brings us to item number one, which is our brand and visual identity development, phase one presentation. Uh, and to that, I'm going to defer to, um, do we have Assistant Director Cole? Or will you be presenting this evening?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to defer in turn to John Lutz. So as the council recall, um, late last year, um, the city retained, um, Selbert Perkins Design to lead up our rebranding project. John is a partner with a firm located here and leads the Chicago office. And he'll be taking us through the, this, um, first phase of results, um, in, in the work that SPD has been doing and preparing for this rebranding project.
Thank you very much. Then with that, take away.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for having me. I'm John, I'm John Lutz. Selbert Perkins Design, as Glenn, uh, said, we're a multidisciplinary design firm specializing in branding. Uh, uh, in offices here in Chicago, uh, Los Angeles and Boston. Um, so we are thrilled to be working with, uh, with, with the, with the city on this rebranding effort. Uh, we have been working very, uh, hard the last three months to really get what we call our research and discovery. So as we do the rebrand and we start to look at the visual language that we create, we really need data and, and, uh, data and input from stakeholders, from the community, so that we can make sure what we're doing is on track with the message we want to say for the new brand. So I am going to quickly go through, and I do need my glasses.
You have until midnight, so take your time.
Okay. Um, so our, our original, our goals and objectives are, we want to really develop a unique visual, uh, and verbal identity system that drives engagement, that builds brand equity, highlight the unique attributes of Rolling Meadows, develop a clear brand architecture and hierarchy, and evoke a sense of community pride and advocacy. Encourage businesses, visitors, and the community partners to invest, visit and collaborate, and communicate a clear, consistent, and cohesive message with the brand throughout all types of applications. So this is a four-phase project. We're in phase one, which is the research and discovery, as I said. Uh, so within that, we did our kickoff. We did a brand audit where we looked at all of the communication efforts, understanding how it's currently being done. We did a competitive analysis with, uh, various adjacent communities uh, within the Chicagoland area. Um, and then we had our discovery, and that's where we really developed a questionnaire. We conducted key stakeholder interviews, uh, and we did our community outreach survey. And, um, and then this finding presentation is what I'm going to, uh, go through right now. And I've edited this down from what you were supplied, so it's not as many slides. So I hope to get done before midnight. So, um, you know, our competitive analysis, we obviously, you know, obviously looked, looked at Northwest Chicago, really understanding what other, what other, uh, communities are doing, the cities are doing, because what we need to do is really differentiate ourselves from all these different communities. Um, and so it's really important to understand what they are all doing in terms of their logo and their branding. Um, we also need to look at all of the businesses within Rolling Meadows and adjacent to Rolling Meadows to understand what they're doing and know how their visual language starts to work. And how we fit within that net. Then we looked at all of the, kind of how the logo has been, is, is being communicated across all types of media. You know, how it is in the signage, how it is on the website, how it is, you know, on, on, um, print communications, to really understand how it's being applied. Um, and then we looked at a peer analysis of what, you know, other types of logo trends are. If you look at the first one, we have kind of word, word marks, acronyms, uh, seals, really dependent on, oh, sorry. Dependent on nature, kind of inspired by nature, landmark storytelling, and that really features, you know, uh, an architectural feature, a key landmark within, within the city. And then bold and modern. Um, and so through this whole brand audit, what we found is that overall, there's a real inconsistent use of the identity and the logo, uh, across the different, uh, the different types of, um, applications. And there's real minimal brand recognition from our stakeholder interviews that we have done. Um, there's a real need to modernize the look and feel, unify the primary identity in the city's seal, and give the brand a bolder stance across all touchpoints, um, while paying homage to the city's landscape and businesses. So, uh, through that, so that was our audit phase. Then we went into our discovery phase. Um, and that's where we had our key stakeholder interviews. Mayor, Mayor, please, thank you very much for, uh, your time, uh, as we started to, um, to get some, some feedback, but we really looked at, uh, the high school, the junior high school, Megan and Faith, um, the Parks District with Kaylee, uh, Fred was great at the, he was a wonderful interview, um, at the, uh, uh, Historical Society. And then we also had interviewed Mike Rep, um, to kind of get some feedback. And the questions we asked are, what are your current perception of Rolling Meadows and what's your ideal perception? And you know, the, the, the answers were pretty consistent from the stakeholders that we interviewed. Uh, welcoming, friendly, loyal, hardworking was a huge, uh, a huge word that we heard, supportive, um, great public services, uh, affordability, um, great international cuisine. Um, we did hear rolling ghettos, you know, as the kind of the, the slang and how we want to get away from that. Um, quietly brilliant, I thought was a great, um, a great, a, a, a great perception. Um, and Mayberry on steroids. So, um, what's the ideal? Embrace diversity even more as a strength. I mean, this, Rolling Meadows is so diverse. Uh, being able to, you know, really, uh, uh, advertise that diversity is, is something that we want to start to do. Emphasize the geographic location. We're so close to everything. It's so easy to get here. Um, and, uh, you know, emphasize its, its location to Chicago, its location to, to, uh, the, the adjacent neighborhoods. Um, and I think the heart of the city doesn't need to be changed. And actually, the community outreach we did, and I'm gonna share that in a second, supports that. It just needs to be enhanced. And there's a more active community way of defining destinations and creating a more, uh, formal downtown for people to connect and break the stigma that it's just small old houses. So then we ask key words and adjectives that describe, um, you know, what comes to mind when you think about Rolling Meadows. Community, loyal, hardworking, small-town charm, compassionate, um, prideful, and pride was a huge word that we saw through the community outreach as well. Uh, the key images and landmarks to define, um, the, to find Rolling Meadows, a lot of outdoor activities, a lot, a lot of outdoor activities. Uh, the proximity to Chicago and, and how it's easy to get here, and really family, you know, family-friendly and family-oriented. Um, what makes it unique? Legacy and generational living. Several, you know, generations have lived here. Community pride. The partnerships between the schools is a, is a big, you know, and the city and the schools is a big, uh, a big, uh, thing to make it unique. Culturally, culturally diverse. Um, no history museum has a nineteen fifties theme here other than Rolling Meadows. So everything else is around turn of the century. So that was, that was a very, very cool to understand. Uh, walkability, uh, and affordable housing. So, um, then we had the destinations. We got a lot of, the Bell Tower became a, a big landmark, um, the International Cuisine, Salt Creek, the History Museum, and high school football was a big, a big one. Um, so what are the goals for the new brand? And this is from our stakeholders. Increase recognition and impact. Cohesiveness, less fragmented. Look at maybe a secondary breakoff logo that can be used, uh, with or without the Rolling Meadows type. Um, imagery that connects with the city. Clean, simple, bold, modern, timeless. No tombstone shape. We heard a lot about the tombstone shape. And so that, 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 that resonates with us. I think we have to get rid of the tombstone as we start to move forward. Um, a lot, and the colors, the blue and the green were very well received. Um, you know, someone, one, one person said this blue collar. Um, be in, be industry leaders, but it really ties to nature, which I think makes sense. Um, so then we asked this question, if you were a car, what kind of car would you be? And we, I always ask this question because you get like some wonderful, wonderful insight on what you are or what you think you are and what you want to be. So what we heard was, you know, an older minivan is what we currently are in terms of the branding. I don't want to talk about the, you know, in terms of the branding. We want to be a sleek SUV. An older Honda, always older, older Honda Pilot. We want to be a Kia Telluride. A Buick reliable, that's another thing. All of this, everything up top is reliable. And that's what we currently are. But not, not as high-end. So Buick to a Cadillac. Excuse me. And then a pickup truck is what we currently are, but we want to be a fully loaded pickup truck. And I think what, Mayor, what you said was it's, it's a smaller pickup truck that you could, you know, it doesn't get in the way, but it works hard and it, and it, you know, can do its, do, do its job. So what's the vision for the future of Rolling Meadows? Target the younger generation. Has more of been moving here to the area. Robust designated downtown developments, desire for more hangout spots, expand live music offerings, dog parks and other attractions to attempt, to entice potential new residents, and really gateways to identifying you're entering Rolling Meadows. I think through our, um, analysis, really, you don't know when you're in Rolling Meadows. You really don't. Like, you know, it's, it's difficult because fifty-three cuts right through it. Um, you know, there's these small tombstone signs that you kind of see, but you kind of don't. So I So I think we need to really, you know, once we get the brand in place, really with the applications is let people know where they are, that you are in Rolling Meadows. Okay, so after our stakeholder interviews, we, we did our community outreach. We did a digital survey that ran for a month. We had 192 responses. It consisted of 12 questions. And, and then we did a print survey that went, went in, I guess, utility bills, Glenn? I'm not exactly sure where, which bills they went into.
Yeah, it went in the city's monthly prints.
Newsletter, okay. So to get some, to get, to get some input, so we were, we actually combined the results of the two surveys into these results that I'm going to share with you right now. The current perception of the city is overall positive. It really is. I mean, we, you know, we're eights, nines, tens. We don't have a lot of ones, twos, threes. Keywords, we're community, friendly, family, small-town, safe, quiet park. So this really kind of aligns with our stakeholder interviews. The landmarks, a lot of, you know, the same, you know, Kimball Hill, the clock, the bell tower, a lot of the same things we saw in our stakeholder interviews. The attractions and destinations, Comet, like, was, was a big one. But parks, a lot of outdoor, obviously, was big. Now, what's the current perception of the, of the city branding? Not as good. I think we had, you know, we do had, we do have, it's kind of split. It's neutral to positive, but it's not the same kind of graph that you see here where you have overall positive. So the perception of the city is great. It's just, we need an identity that supports that. What people liked, the colors, that it relates to nature. What they didn't like was the font. Some people didn't like the colors, but, you know, we have, we have a lot of people responding here. I think the font was just like very hard to read and very, very illegible. We just heard it was outdated, it was boring. So other communities from, this is from our outreach, that they liked the brand identity, Arlington Heights, Palatine, Schaumburg, Barrington, Naperville, Elk Grove, which was interesting to us, some of these. Unique characteristics, high-quality public services, high-quality education, community pride, affordable housing, and proximity for, to Chicago. So you can see that we have a lot of, what I presented from the stakeholder interviews really continued through the community, the community input that we got. You know, the same deal here, most of the current cars were kind of older, reliable cars, desired in the future, little more higher-end. Electric cars was great to see, 2024, you know, a more modern, timeless, or modern expression. So our survey participants, we had, you know, we did have information in there, and what I think we really got excited about was that we had, the age groups were great. You know, they were all across, like, we had, other than the under-29-year-olds, we had a really good participation from, from a bunch of different age groups. And then we had, you know, we actually asked what neighborhoods you're from, and so, and we tracked that. So that information we have as well in understanding where the residents that responded were from. So in conclusion, the current perception of the, of city of Rolling Meadows is overall positive. The people like the brand identity, the people that like the brand identity is neutral positive. The most common keywords associated were community, family, friendly, small-town, safe, quiet, parks, and more. And for the, for the current logo, they liked the colors, the simplicity, the cleanliness, the imagery of the creek and the meadows, but they disliked the font, some of the colors, and the, and thought it was outdated and boring. Again, you know, they liked some of the adjacent community current identities, and I think the most important characteristics were community pride, walkability, affordable housing, and proximity to Chicago. So we really want to build all of that into our brand. So that's really, all that information is going to be, you know, we're going to start to look at how we can take those and visually express them, and then keep the personality, the brand personality characteristics that are, that we heard that people liked, but expand it, looking at some of the, the suggestions that we found in our survey findings. So we really, you know, we want it to be memorable and unique, clean, simple, bold, modern, and timeless, help to differentiate Rolling Meadows from the other surrounding cities. And then, you know, I've kind of covered a lot of this already, but, you know, look, like, looking at the colors and build a cohesive and less fragmented brand by using the brand consistently. And as part of this effort, we're also looking at a new tagline that will help to further define the brand and demystify any negative perceptions that we heard, like the rolling ghettos. So what we are doing after this is developing concepts. So we're now in the design phase. So we're actually developing a brand personality. I'm going to share a draft with you right after this, after this slide. And then we're going to start to develop logos. There's a community outreach event that we're targeting for, I think, May 11th. And then we're going to have a work session with the Hispanic-Latino community as well. So in terms of taking all that information, what we want to build into the brand, community-driven, dependable, family-friendly, smart, playful, industrious. Nature should be something that we incorporate within here. Small but has potential, it's tight-knit, self-and-well-maintained, good public services and education, walkability, affordable, simple, clean, modern, and timeless. So this is our personality that we've, are going to build into this branding effort that we're going to be doing. We actually started, but wanted to give you an update of where we are. And I think that is it. Yes?
Thank you. So before we open up the floor for questions and discussion regarding the preliminary research, we'd like to hear from wards one, wards two, and wards seven, because some of the responses that we received from the neighborhoods did not list anybody on the west side of Route 53. So any thoughts from those wards before? Can we go to the slide for the results?
Yep.
190 or so? What neighborhoods? There it is. Oh, let's go forward where it shows the neighborhoods that...
Oh, yeah, hold on.
There we go.
This is perception. Here.
So Kirchhoff, Campbell, Meadow Drive, Owl Drive, St. James, and Pheasant. Those are all east-side neighborhoods. So...
So you're saying that we did, the west side did not participate?
That's what I would like to ask. So we have, we have, oh, we have, we have one individual from the west side who's here this evening who participated. So this is telling us kind of our top six? Did we have participation from the west side of Route 53?
We did, yes. And actually, these are the top six. And we are actually going to be plotting. Glenn, you want to?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So this, what you're seeing here, the format of the question was, we respect your privacy. If you're interested, would you tell us your address or nearby cross street?
I see.
So this is just word grouping. There are a lot of people that cross street with Kirchhoff, and so Kirchhoff shows up to base to the Word Cloud. There's a larger format Word Cloud in the Agenda packet that lists a whole bunch of different streets. Plum Grove is one of the larger ones on there, for example. We're in the process of converting these into a map product so that, you know, when there's a further developed version of this, you can see a map of where survey books came from. Because these aren't in a standard address form, that's just more of a time-consuming task. It was going to be ready.
Thank you so much. So just to summarize then, we do have responses, not in our top six, but we'll be able to then see a map through the council to show where we've been able to sample these, these thoughts and beliefs about the city of Rolling Meadows. So thank you for that. From the council, what questions or comments do we have? Yes, Aldrin Boucher.
So the mayor and I kind of chatted earlier, but with the new director coming into the library and the library kind of being a subsidiary of the city, is there any way cities that we can include the library into the rebranding so that the library is not completely different? Colors, fonts, text? It would be that same cohesive, while still their own cohesive to our message? If we're going to spend the time and money to rebrand, we should probably rebrand so the things within the city are equal or kind of in that same ballpark?
Bringing in a new director might be a good time to adjust to some change. It sounds like we have a... Yes, go ahead.
Sure. So of course, you know, some of this is the degree with the library reflects, of course, the state from other city departments. And the final product that's over, that's producing, of course, is to reflect the city as a whole, but also reflects our departments to that a little more individualized and use of public tools by the major, there's some examples of how we triple library in there. There, we made the same comment for the, about the public district, which is more of a, I actually showed up, you can see there the positive flag from the time school, of course, that you and another player, you, this kind of, it's a, it's whatever.
And we talked about co-branding, how the city identity will work with all of the, and we would definitely include, you know, the library in terms of how that would work together. So, yeah, and if there's a new director, I'm happy to meet with them and get their, you know, get their feedback, because I think that would be important. One thing that we also were, we told all our stakeholders is that, you know, after we, you know, we start to, to do some brand identity and some logos, we'd like to get some initial feedback from them as well. So maybe we can include the library director within that.
They're not here yet. They've not started till May.
Good thinking ahead.
If it's May 11th, we'll be ready to talk with them.
Thank you very much. Yes, Aldrin and Coler.
Thank you, John, for the presentation. I am absolutely shocked that when you asked what kind of car they were, everybody didn't say we are Mustangs.
We got a couple Pintos.
Mustangs, we are those Mustangs. But first of all, I think you're going to get a big challenge here because one of the key things was diversity. And so with diversity comes, nobody's going to like, most people aren't going to like what you come up with. That's going to be a challenge for you. But we have to get that kind of unity in there. So the key question I'm always concerned about in these things, and I'm going to ask you, John, where do you live?
I live in Barrington.
And so from somebody who's not in the community, when you think of Rolling Meadows, did we come up with the same things as inside people talking to you as the people outside that look at Rolling Meadows?
Well, the awareness...
People always call us rolling ghettos, but that's...
Actually, you know, my, my son is here today because he's in civics class, goes to Barrington High School, had never heard of rolling ghettos before. So I think that the awareness, I think that, I think that right now, there's an awareness problem of rolling meadows. Because as a resident of Barrington, and I've lived there for, how old are you, seventeen? Seventeen years? You know, I knew Rolling Meadows was here, and I'd been to Rolling Meadows, but I couldn't tell you that I, before I saw this initiative, that, you know, what Rolling Meadows was. Like, I've been here, I didn't know I was in Rolling Meadows.
Yeah, so, you know, when you started this, and I, Mayor knows that I looked at another branding initiative for another town, but if I was to ask somebody outside of this community, what do you think when I say Rolling Meadows? I'm going to tell you what they say. One, the exit off 50, off 90, because there's a sign that says Rolling Meadows.
Yep.
That's an identity. Second thing, that's where the courthouse is. That's why they come here, they come for the courthouse. The next thing is, are you guys where the bears are going? So they got that in their mind. So I'm curious what people outside identify us as, and how to, if it's negative, I want to bridge that, to try to get a more impressive image for people outside. So that, you know, courthouses can have two things. One is to see the government. The other thing is, oh, my gosh, that's where all the crime and trouble is, right?
Right.
So we want to protect the reputation of the city, not only, because we're very proud of the city, but we want everybody else to look at us as being, you know, a diamond in the field kind of thing. So I'm only going to challenge you to say, go ask the people in Barrington.
Yeah.
And your son doesn't know us, so that's interesting.
Yeah. Well, he knows through the high school, but...
And actually, if people don't know us, if you ask a lot of people, where are you? Ask about Rolling Meadows, they'll say, well, not where are you? And they'll say, we're just next to Arlington Heights or Schaumburg or Woodfield Mall. They know we're somewhere in that area, but they never identify us as, you know, nobody ever says Schaumburg's a suburb of Rolling Meadows.
Yeah.
They'll say that we're kind of the suburb of Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, Palatine. So it's, I think it's important to get that in our minds, what do we want the outside to think as well?
That's excellent point. And I think, you know, as we move forward and we can, you know, do some, you know, through this process, do some outreach and include some of the adjacent communities to address that as well.
Thank you. And Aldrin McHale? I'm, I represent Ward One, and a lot of people that live in Ward One just say that they live in Palatine, because it's, it's hard to explain where, when I say I live in Rolling Meadows, they're thinking I'm over here by the jewel on Kirchhoff and not over by Harper College. So I think that's going to be interesting for you, as Aldrin and Coler says, people from the outside, but the people from the inside that feel so far removed from, you know, what we consider the downtown of Rolling Meadows and Mayberry, like, that is so far from us. And we identify more with the village of Palatine, and we have Palatine mailing addresses. So it's going to be interesting to see what, how we can kind of bring this cohesively together and make, you know, my part of town feel more like we belong here.
Well, there's interventions you can do that help to unify it with, you know, once we get the brand together and we start doing the applications in terms of, because if you look, Rolling Meadows is...
Huge.
Interesting, it's huge, and it's in interesting shape, right? It's not a square. So, you know, but environmental graphics and branding that can be within the environment. So, you know, street banners, you know, gateways at the entrances as you, that let people know that you've arrived, all that helps tie this community together. So I think that's critical once we get through the branding effort and showing how that works.
And the other part that's kind of challenging over on our side is we go to Front High School and not Rolling Meadows, and we are part of the Palatine Park District and not the Rolling Meadows Park District. So that's, good luck.
Well, thank you.
I think what Aldrin McHale is saying is that we have some serious challenges, which is why we're looking forward to the solutions that will be proposed in order to be able to bridge those gaps and to see it, yeah.
I'm up for the challenge.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
This time, we're going to defer to Business Development Manager Martha Corner regarding the 2024 Bytes and Beats on Kirchhoff Food Truck and Music Event Series overview.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very pleased, first, to announce the presence in the room of Janine Mullenelli. She's the Chair of the Economic Development Committee and also a resident, the Chair of the Board of Trustees of Community Church of Rolling Meadows, Skip Froehlich, in the back of the room. If it weren't for Skip, we wouldn't be here tonight, I can assure you of that. And Laurie Cisak, who is my staff partner in the planning portion of this event. The history of the event basically stems from the fact that we're trying to do more destination events and things of that nature. And the Economic Development Committee was kind of tasked with brainstorming. They came up with the food truck idea. I took it back to City Manager Rob Saba, and he said, absolutely, this year, let's do it. So for this year, we're using Community Events Foundation funds. While Rob Saba was in Highland Park, he helped coordinate the Ravinia food trucks, which are very successful by the city of Highland Park. And so come to, fast forward to today, we're working with Benson &amp; USA, who does the Ravinia food trucks, and she couldn't make it tonight, she's not feeling well. Great to partner with them, great to partner with Community Church of Rolling Meadows, it's been a wonderful team effort. So that being said, we're planning five events, the fourth Friday of the warmer months of May through September. So that being said, um, we're planning, uh, five events, the fourth Friday of the warmer months of May through September, the fourth, the fourth Wednesdays, at the Community Church of Meadows parking lot located at twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. Um, the city is organizing all other aspects of the event besides the food trucks. Today, we have fully booked all the events. We have a, uh, a range of musical styles from, uh, Brazilian, bossa nova, to, um, calypso, blues, bluegrass, and et cetera. Great lineup. I also need to give credit to Robert Savage, our intern, who's been very helpful in all this planning. So that being said, we have a full musical lineup. We have seven food trucks lined up. They range from barbecue to lobster rolls to burgers to funnel cakes to chicken, to Mexican, Italian beef, et cetera. The list goes on. It's going to be a really good event. Um, we want the first event to very much succeed, to get the food trucks engaged and wanting to come back. So I encourage you all to amplify the schedule, this lineup. We're working with the Daily Herald on digital advertising, the summer fun section. We'll be doing extensive, um, social media, Facebook, community message board, et cetera. So we're going to lean hard into the marketing for the first event to make that first event a big success. So I appreciate your help getting the word out. Can I advance to the next slide, Kelly? I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the site layout. Again, kudos to Mr. Froehlich for working with us on this. He's really put a lot of effort into getting to this point. We'll have food trucks on the sides of the parking lot and the rear. There will be, uh, limited bar service between Phoenix Flame and Ratt being the providers alternately in the rear of the lot. We have purchased picnic tables, and, um, we have high top tables with stools to go in this picnic area. The stage will be in the rear of the grassy area, and then, um, you can see basically that's the lineup. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions or any comments, well received. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Any questions from the council? Yes, Alderman Mache.
Um, May twenty-second, Ward Five will be hosting Carl Sandberg's Emory Mills High School graduate, the junior high graduation and the high school graduation on May twenty-second. I will have a very hard sell in my ward to be pushing anybody away from those events. I just, was it, is there a reason we double booked on it? Because that's going to be a lot of our community is going to be at some sort of a graduation.
Yeah, Lori.
Because they're at the same time.
Yeah, Lori, can you, uh, help me explain? We were just trying to make the event consistent. At the time we were scheduling, I don't think we were mindful of the graduation event, to be perfectly honest with you. So I think that's just been, you know, just a misstep on our part, but I appreciate you bringing that up. But I, we were hoping to bring people from, throughout the Northwest suburbs as well, so.
And that is a concern to me on Central, because we are already emptying Conyers and then emptying, filling the high school and emptying the high school. Like, it's already a traffic craze with the two graduations an hour apart, and then to have people coming to downtown as well. Is the, are the police ready for extra traffic beyond what we're already going to be creating on Central? Because Fremont's graduation is that day as well.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, we do have extra officers out. Obviously, you know, we're going to have our hands full. There is a lot of traffic control. The, the thing is, is the timeframe is usually pretty condensed. So, I mean, we've, pretty common to do multiple events on a single day, so obviously it'll be challenging, but I think we're up for it.
Thank you for your comments.
Alderman Kohler.
Community Church, thank you. It is a landmark in itself. And they're good at doing events on that because the Corn Fest, of course, is one of the highlights of the year for the city. What do we do about traffic and parking for this event? Because it's always been kind of a challenge for parking in particular, for the events coming there, not only that one, but then sometimes they do, I don't, I think it's here, but across the street, they used to do the car show kind of thing. And traffic, uh, I, excuse me, parking was always a challenge. What are we doing now that we don't have Dominic's parking lot and all that?
Well, based on past practice, in particular with the city markets, which are no longer operating, we've relied on surrounding parking areas and on-street parking, and it has seemed to, to work adequately. And we will have crossing guards as well.
Should we coordinate with those, like the, uh, the church across the street?
Yeah, we'll be communicating with them.
Jewel.
Yeah, and again, based on past practice, parking really hasn't been, um, insurmountable for the patrons.
Okay, well, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you very much. And at this time, we will move to our final item of this evening regarding the overview of the city's vehicle replacement policy. And to that, we will defer to Public Works Superintendent of Internal Services, Isaiah Sediman. Take it away.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so good evening, members of the council, uh, Mayor Sanoika. So, uh, my name is Isaiah Sediman. I've been the Internal Services Superintendent as of July of twenty-twenty-three. And I'm here to discuss and hopefully introduce what we hope will become the first, the city's first ever, uh, vehicle replacement policy. So I'll give you a little bit of background on myself. So, uh, I've been in the vehicle and equipment repair industry for a little over twenty years, uh, which includes time in both the public and private fleets. Of those twenty years, uh, coming this November, uh, will mark my ten-year anniversary with the city of Rolling Meadows, where I've spent most of that time as a mechanic working on our fleet. So in that time, uh, I spent as much time as I can learning the ins and outs of the city's, uh, vehicle and equipment replacement practices and pretty much how, uh, we do everything here from, uh, past and present employees as well as making connections with fellow fleet managers in surrounding areas. So, uh, this, uh, policy is something, these procedures are things that we have always done, so we're kind of just looking to formalize it, uh, looking to put it on paper so everybody knows exactly what we're doing. Uh, with that being said, this policy is fluid. It's a fluid document as, as technologies change and advance. Uh, I personally feel that the fleet will change within the next five to ten years with EVs, alternate fuels, everything else coming out. So it is, uh, a document, it's a policy that we'll have to revisit annually or biannually and, uh, make adjustments to it. I just wanted to take the things that we do now and put them on paper. So with that, so the objective of this policy is just to act as a reference, to establish guidelines to ensure that we consistently and effectively manage all the city's vehicles and equipment. Uh, we want to, we aim to optimize the taxpayers' funds, so they are who funds us, who employs us pretty much. So we want to make sure that we're using their funds responsibly, uh, and maximizing the value of the equipment and, uh, vehicles. Uh, this also helps us aid in capital budgeting, so what we noticed this past year, is a lot of the time, because of all the vehicle, uh, what's it called, uh, I'm sorry. So because of all the vehicle shortages, commodity shortages, a lot of the stuff kind of built up. And because we have that, uh, yearly, we, we replace squad cars every five years. We replace the duck of cars every six years. Because we know that, because of that past, past practice, we are able to chart it and kind of forecast what's going to happen with the next upcoming years. So this next slide kind of shows that a little bit. If you look, uh, the Vehicle Replacement Committee members know that Dwayne had a really hard time ordering vehicles. Nothing was coming in. All of a sudden, in twenty-twenty-four, we ended up receiving six squad cars, which is half of our police vehicles. And, uh, if you look at that, if we stay on pace with that, twenty-twenty-eight, five years out, we're going to be replacing six cars again. So having that visual, because we know the year timeline that we're replacing things, we're able to spread that back out and ensure that we're not having such dramatic spikes in vehicle purchasing. So it makes it a little bit easier, and that's one of those guidelines where, I'll show you in a couple of slides, how all the vehicles have their, uh, years. So some of the key sections of the policy, I didn't want to go over the whole policy because we'd be here forever. So I just pulled a couple of things out of there here and there. So some of the important parts of it are the replacement evaluation and criteria, replacement parameters, replacement timelines. Uh, we wanted to include a minimum use policy to ensure that we're not keeping vehicles that are not being utilized. Uh, reassignment and disposal, pool vehicle usage, alternative fuels and electric vehicles. And that's the portion of the policy that is probably going to keep changing. It's going to change the most over the next couple of years. So, and I also wanted to include a, uh, slide on the current vehicle assignment, so we know how many vehicles are currently in our fleet. And, uh, what we're looking is to keep the fleet from growing if unnecessarily. So in our evaluation, uh, criteria, what we have is a, uh, life expectancy report. And this is something that we present to the, uh, Vehicle Replacement Committee members in June. And it's pretty much just a point system that we give to vehicles. Uh, we analyze the vehicle condition, the value, depreciation value, uh, maintenance cost, uh, repair costs. All that stuff, we put it into a point system that's easy to understand and easy to explain and easy to present so that we can be consistent with how we're replacing things. So that, like I said, that, that is, uh, presented to committee members, Vehicle Replacement Committee members in June, along with a tour of that vehicle, so that we can point everything out and show them that. So a lot of those parameters from that point system, uh, we came up with those from historical practices. Input from fellow fleet managers. We're part of a municipal fleet managers association, which is fleet managers from surrounding municipalities. And we meet once a month to discuss all kinds of issues, and, uh, it's a very helpful, uh, group to, uh, be a part of just because we help each other out procure vehicles in difficult times to procure stuff. So, uh, and then a lot of the other stuff came out of the APWA Publications, Plan Fleet Replacement and Managing Public, uh, Equipment. So this is a sample of the LER, the Life Expectancy Report, and this is kind of what we're looking at. Uh, on the right side is what is presented to committee members in June. So pretty much what we're looking at is we're looking at the age of the vehicle, the mileage, uh, operation, maintenance costs, the condition of the vehicle, and the consistency within the five-year replacement plan. So we can kind of shift things around, make sure that we know five years ahead, what is coming up due, we kind of know what to expect. Uh, and the good thing is, just because a vehicle is due for replacement year-wise, uh, if the point system deems that that vehicle is still in good condition, is still useful, we can defer it for up to two years. And from there, we just keep reassessing it every year, and it keeps us from replacing a vehicle that doesn't need to be replaced. Or sometimes we do find that, uh, that vehicle, that particular vehicle, because of shortages or something, has a higher resale value at this point, and we don't have a need for that vehicle, so we can go ahead and sell it. And, uh, we did that this past, uh, fall. We were able to sell a lot of our vehicles and make a pretty decent amount of money on them, uh, just because the condition of our fleet, because we replace everything in a timely basis, and we had those extra vehicles available. Uh, these are some of the timelines, the replacement timelines that we currently use. These, this is all from historical data, uh, and pretty much what we have done is we found that sweet spot in these vehicles where you can keep it, the, uh, the maintenance, the repair costs are still relatively low, and you still get a good, a decent return on investment. So, uh, these are just suggestions. Some of these vehicles, we end up deferring, keeping a little bit longer. Uh, but as you could see, samples like City Hall, a lot of the smaller administrative cars are ten-year vehicles. Uh, and some of those we will push off. Uh, some of these numbers will change because we do hope to replace a lot of these with EV vehicles in the future. And we don't know what the life expectancy is on those, what the timelines are on those. Uh, and if you notice under the police section, uh, police patrol vehicles are typically a five-year, hundred-thousand-mile vehicle. Uh, in investigations, they're six-year, hundred-thousand-mile vehicles. Underneath, uh, those vehicles are always good candidates for second-line vehicles. So we hand them down and repurpose them to other departments. That is, uh, like our community service officer, our school resource officers are all in retired squad cars that are no longer available for use as frontline vehicles, but now as second-line vehicles. And with investigations, uh, those vehicles, we typically like to rotate them because of the nature of their work. It's an unmarked investigation vehicle. So, uh, what we kind of worked out, what I worked out with, uh, Chief Nowacki, were, and, uh, Director Grosskopf was, if we take that vehicle, we use it for six years in investigations, and then we rotate it into the Human Services Department because it's an unmarked vehicle, they have minivans, multi-passenger vehicles. That gives us twelve years out of that vehicle before we even have to think about selling it or auctioning it off. And it keeps us from having to buy new vehicles for, uh, a division. And, uh, with fire equipment, same thing, ten, twenty years for the, uh, fire engines. Uh, with those, those vehicles, uh, engines and aerials will spend ten years as a frontline vehicle, and then ten years as a reserve. So it's a twenty-year vehicle, but ten of those years are a frontline service. Public Works is kind of a little bit all over the place because we have the most diverse, uh, fleet. So, uh, our refuse trucks and sweepers, we have it about eight years. Because really, at that time, year seven is when refuse trucks start to become problematic. And, uh, both those vehicles tend to be really expensive if you have a lot of issues. So we tend to dump those off at about eight years. Uh, admin vehicles, ten years as well. Most pickup trucks are twelve to fifteen years. And then, uh, some, like our forklift, some of our equipment is ten years. Uh, our loaders are twenty-five years. And those are vehicles that we don't see a lot of issues with. Again, these, uh, timelines are kind of just guidelines. If we do see a vehicle that we're seeing increased repair costs, increased maintenance costs, increased problems with, uh, parts, if something's discontinued, if we can't get parts for it, we can move it up within the replacement schedule. So this was my word wall that Aaron called. So, uh, fire engines, I already told you guys about that. The ambulances, uh, those used to be eight-year vehicles. Uh, but after talking to, uh, Fire Chief Sutter, uh, those were changed. We went from an international, medium-duty, uh, chassis to the Ford F-six-fifty, uh, just because of the better ride, better ride control, uh, and other factors. So we did move that up to ten years. We don't know how that's going to work out. We don't know if it's going to actually last ten years. So that's one that we're going to have to evaluate, take a close look at it. Uh, and it might be one that we might have to drop back down to eight ye- eight years. Uh, the other thing with ambulances is there's a lot of equipment in there. So sometimes by the time you get to year ten, that equipment is antiquated, and it's, it's cheaper to, uh, move on and purchase a whole new vehicle than retrofit it for two years and then buy something new two years later. So that's one that we're going to keep an eye on and evaluate. Uh, minimum use policy, this is one that, uh, we've kind of looked at in the past with a lot of city vehicles. This is a vehicle that a department will purchase and decide that they don't want to necessarily get rid of it because they want to have it as a spare or whatever. Uh, but this kind of ensures, like this, we look at it. We want to ensure that we're getting optimal use out of our vehicles. If a vehicle's not being used, we want to figure out why. We want to justify keeping it if it's not being used. Uh, so can we utilize this vehicle in a different department? Can we reassign it? Is there a new department that we see in the future coming up or a use in the immediate future? Uh, and we'll keep it there, but that just makes it so we have to justify to the replacement committee why we're going to keep this vehicle. Pool vehicles and reserve vehicles, this was a section that, uh, City Manager Saba wanted included in here. So this is, once a vehicle is replaced, it's no longer eligible for use as a frontline vehicle. This keeps, uh, departments and divisions from growing the fleet unnecessarily. This is, to me, once we deem, once the Vehicle Replacement Committee deems that a vehicle needs to be replaced, uh, there was a reasoning behind that, so we should no longer keep that vehicle. Some of those vehicles are eligible after we evaluate them, and, uh, we deem like, hey, these need minimal repairs. This is something that we can use as a second-line status vehicle that is not going to be out there on an emergen- emergency call. So, uh, with those, uh, the timeline that we have is like a frontline squad car. We'll serve it five years as a squad car, then it will serve whatever years as a school resource officer, uh, community service officer, or, uh, police pool vehicle. And it, it could be a year, it could be two years, it could be three years. It all depends. If we start having issues with that vehicle, we will pull it out of there and put a different one in there. Uh, after that, it will go to Public Works, and we'll just use it as a pool vehicle. It's something that we use to run to get parts just locally. It's not going on long trips. Uh, and then after that, we, usually with those vehicles, we dispose of through auction. That's where we have found we get the highest resale value for. where we have found we get the highest resale value for them. Investigations, I kind of already explained that, where we're going to reassign those to Human Services and then at the end of the life of there, it will go to Public Works as a pool vehicle. And with those vehicles, it's something that if somebody, IT, fire, anybody needs some means of transportation, they can come and get it from us and then it will be sold through auction. So alternate fuel and electric vehicles, so we've always kind of, we've always been committed to purchasing low emission vehicles, the city has always done that and we're in the works, everybody wants, we, we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint. So what we have been working on a lot is ensuring that we do the proper research so that we have the proper infrastructure in place to do that, to proceed with EV. Talking with a lot of the MFMA members, I was actually at a seminar today and there are a lot of consultants available now. EV has been a big part of the private sector and it is very new to the fleet area, at least for municipal fleet. So a lot of it is you have to do your homework, make sure you do everything right the first time to avoid expensive, unnecessary upgrades to infrastructure. So it's, it's something that we've been working on planning. I've sat down with Director Grosskopf and we've identified already 17 vehicles within Public Works, Community Development, within our fleet that can go EV and need minimal infrastructure to, to be available to them. So it is something that we're working on, we're, carbon footprint reduction is a big thing for us, so we just want to ensure that we can continue to provide our residents with the service that they're accustomed to, so we don't want to negatively impact any of that stuff. This is just our current vehicle assignment, so right now we have 112 total vehicles and this list will be in the policy and it's something that we can keep updating. This is something that I'll update with the Vehicle Replacement Committee on a yearly basis, just so they can kind of get an overview of what kind of vehicles we have, how diverse our fleet actually is. A lot of the vehicles with asterisks on them are second-line vehicles, so we do utilize them quite a bit. And that's pretty much it, I think. So what we're doing is kind of, we brought this up to the Vehicle Replacement Committee in March, I believe, and I kind of talked it out and we wanted to bring it out to the council members to kind of seek feedback and if there's something that we might bring up to go to actual council approval on April 23rd. So any questions or feedback would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Coler. So with that, are there any points of feedback or questions that the council has at this time?
Yes.
Alderman Coler.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, does anybody except Ford Interceptor make a police car?
Yes, actually Chevy Blazer just introduced their EV pursuit unit that actually just became available as of last year. Some of the problems with the shortages, commodity shortages, you're still not able to get them. As far as I know, they introduced it in, I believe, November and I know of, one of our outfitters, our vendors for our lighting, said that he just saw the first couple being delivered. So they do have it, it's a little bit smaller than the Explorer Interceptor, but they are, they are the only other one right now.
Okay, so, follow-up question? Two things I would like to see, if we can, and this may be Assistant City Manager can help with this. When you're doing a replacement, nice to know two things. One is what we're going to replace with, what's the environmental impact of that replacement?
Okay.
So put that in the policy that we're going to assess what the environmental impact is of the replacement, because you talked about EVs.
Yeah.
I don't know how we're going to do that. Assistant Manager Col, but I think it would be useful because I think it's probably in our sustainability plan someplace where we're going to keep track of how we're managing our fleets. The second thing, and just as, is what's the economic impact of the replacement? What I'm mainly concerned with, and I've asked this before, so somehow you know who you are, get this, but not necessarily what is the cost of the new vehicle, but what is the cost of ownership of that new vehicle?
Okay.
Because I am absolutely convinced that electric vehicles, cost of ownership is a lot less than the cost of ownership.
Yeah, so and I've sat down and I've done a little bit of research within our fleet to see, kind of compare, and what I've come up with is with a lot of the vehicles that we looked at, and there were a lot of administrative vehicles that we can switch over, a lot of our like water vans, our facilities vans, can, we can go with an EV Transit. The higher, the upfront cost of the actual vehicle is a little bit higher, but in the end, you're pretty even between the fuel. So the 17 vehicles that I identified would save the city about 5,000 gallons of fuel a year, so just with those. So there is a significant amount of cost savings with them.
And I think that's also, aside from electric vehicles, combustion engine too, I think as we improve, as they improve the technology for those.
Yes.
Fuel efficiency and maintenance and they keep extending. I think I saw some cars now being given a warranty of like 200,000 miles or something.
Yeah. So I know the EV batteries, a lot of them are 10-year in the private sector, I don't know what it is on the fleet side of it, but that is one of the things we discussed today at our MFMA meeting, was one of the concerns is the resale value. So we don't know, because nobody has had to do it yet, what the resale value on an EV vehicle for a fleet would be. So as of right now, I think people would be a little apprehensive to buy a vehicle that has a 10-year warranty on a battery at year 10 of when we are trying to dispose of it. So that's the one unknown, but that's just because EV is so new in our field and our, in our industry. But that's one of those things that those batteries keep getting better, technology keeps getting way better.
But my point on that was also for combustion engines.
Yeah.
They're improving the technology on those also.
Correct.
Cost of ownership on the replacement should be less.
Yeah.
As we go forward. For the value to our citizens and the city, cost is just as important. How are we reducing that maintenance cost?
Yeah.
In our replacements? So if we can have an environmental impact for the replacement as well as a cost impact of getting a replacement, and when I say cost impact, put aside the cost of the vehicle, I want to know what we're saving in maintenance.
Okay.
Which sounds like something you'd work in, so you know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The cost of maintenance is on that. What is FMA?
FM, so it's a Fleet Managers Association.
Okay.
So it's, it's just, it's just, it's kind of just a gathering of fleet managers from neighboring towns and it's, we meet once a month and discuss all kinds of stuff, so it's, it's actually informative, they help us. Sometimes some of us have different connections with different dealerships. So when we were having all those vehicle shortages a couple of years ago, they would call, hey, I know a guy that has an extra vehicle if you need it, whatever, blah, blah. So it's just a group, we get together and they, we're actually going to a green conference May 9th and the majority of the discussions in the last year have been all EV and green and how do we push through with moving to this technology? And a lot of it has been about cost. How do we, how do we deal with those costs? How do we deal with some of the retooling, comparing, everything, all that stuff? So it's something that we talk about all the time and I think it's something that is going to be ongoing for a while. EVs aren't going away, so.
Thank you, Alderman Coler. Alderman, easy on.
Thank you. So I'm going to do the flip side to that, is that I just want us to be cautious as a city moving forward with electric vehicles, especially for some of our first responding vehicles, that in an event of a catastrophe, natural disaster, electricity may not be available to those vehicles to charge. So I just want us to be mindful that we're, we are being mindful, practical with money, however, we still need to get those services out if, you know, the resources aren't available, like electricity. The good old fashioned pump, the gas will work every time.
Yes, and so out of the vehicles that we've identified, a lot of them had been administrative vehicles, they've been water vans that usually typically work the regular seven to three. None of the vehicles that we have looked at for EV are first responder emergency vehicles. So with police, there is other things we can look at. One of them is the plug-in EV, which still utilizes internal combustion engine as a backup. There's a lot of hybrids and things like that. So I think the days of municipality because of the services we provide going full EV are pretty far away. In today's seminar, we're talking about snowplows and street sweepers and none of us saw how an electric snowplow will ever work soon. It's just a very difficult thing to do, but as far as like a street sweeper, it'll work, it was just twice the price. So it's, it is something we have looked at. We want to make sure that with any alternative fuel, whether it's hydrogen, EV, hybrid, one of the main concerns is we want to make sure that we don't negatively impact the services that we offer our residents.
Thank you. Then the council looks forward to seeing the vehicle replacement policy on the April 23rd, 2024 agenda. Thank you, Martha.
Perfect. Thank you.
At this time, looking for a motion to adjourn this evening. Thanks, Alderman McHill, for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned at 8:36 PM.